I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, December 15th, 2014. Want to welcome everyone. Somewhere out there is Pastor Christopher Walker. Are you there? He's with the Greater Grace Temple Church of God, right down the street, 954 Bank Street. If you'll come forward at this time, and you can go here.
Yep.
And do our invocation, and then also lead us in the place of the flag. Everyone, please rise, please.
Let have.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Our dear wise and loving Father, let us first say thank you, on behalf of gathering us here today, and thanking you for our many abundant blessings that you've bestowed upon us and this city. Thank you, Lord, for all of the city officials that are gathered here today, especially the mayor. We pray for him, and in particular, for those of this assembled council. We're asking today, Lord, that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern conflicting interests in the issues of our times. Grant unto them, God, a sense of welfare and true needs of the people. Also, God, grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. And last but not least, personal peace in the lives of everyone assembled here today. Give us peace in our city. Continue to give us peace in our nation, in the name that's above every name. We pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
And for those folks that are looking for a new church, or just want to change, or maybe you don't go to church, I'm sure the folks at Greater Grace Temple Church of God, right down the street, 954 Bank Street. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Item two is agenda changes, and we do not have anything. We don't have any agenda changes. Three is a mayor will report. The only thing I have to report is, I've got two council members that are out. Andrea Bluestein and Melanie Pritchett, they're both out ill tonight. Item four is land issues, on these annexations, we don't have anything under that topic. Item five is previous licenses, we have none. Six is formal business. A 2014 has 408 approval to fix and publish qualifying fees for the upcoming 2015 city general election for the mayor and council seats. The fee for the mayor and council, for the mayor, will be $756, and the council is $567. Can you give the background on that? Ms. Howard.
Yes. Pursuant to state law, the governing authority of any county or municipality, not later than February 1st of any year in which a general election is to be held, should fix the qualifying fees. This is being done in compliance with that law.
I'll ask Ms. Terry, another which you chairs the Finance and Administration Committee.
Yes, and to clarify, and I'm not going to do the math, but the, this is not an arbitrary number, it's actually, actually a percentage of the salary that one would earn in that elected position. And at this time, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve item 6A, which is item 2014-408, its approval to fix and publish qualifying fees for upcoming 2015 city general election for mayor and council seats. The fee for mayor will be $756, and for the council, it's $567.
Second. I have motion to second to approve this qualifying fees for the upcoming 2015 election. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, the motion, please vote. Let's approve 5-0. Item seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Howard, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, we have item A2, 2014-405, approve the mayor and council meeting minutes for December 1st, 2014, 2014-396, approval to use the council chambers on Thursday, December 18th, 2014, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Oak Ridge Estates HOA meeting. Item C, 2014-399, award RFP 15-017, Valley Oaks Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project to the lowest bidder, IPR Southeast, for $62,405, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item D, CON 2014-06, to authorize the contract extension of RFP 11-009 for residential municipal solid waste disposal for an additional four years at a 3% CPI increase per year with advanced disposal Smyrna Transfer Station. Item E, GRA 2014-03, authorize the 2015 LMIG grant, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents with the Georgia Department of Transportation. And then item F, POL 2014-02, approval of Community Development Block Grant, Slum and Blight Clearance Program Policies and Procedures.
Move approval.
We have motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those who are in favor, the motion, please vote. Let's approve 5-0. Thank you very much. Committee report. I will ask, I'll do Ms. Bluestein's and Ms. Pritchett's. Ken Sudrich, where do you go? You got anything you want to bring up?
I actually thought, since I didn't have an item on the agenda, I'd just sit in the back tonight, and then you still brought me up here.
Yeah.
No, again, business is continuing. Year to year, from November to November, we're actually up 22% this year over last year. I think that's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it. Let's talk to Ms. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have both of our public safety leaders. I want to give the public a chance, every meeting possible, to see them, whether they have an update or not. Chief Lee, why don't we have you and the Police Department come, give a brief update. A lot of good things happening in the city, and a lot of challenges faced by these folks during the holidays, so we appreciate you.
Yes, sir. And one of the things I just wanted to start out with is to remind the public when they're out shopping, not to leave items in their cars in plain sight. If they have to leave something in the car, to please leave it in the trunk. There's a time when bad guys are out shopping too, but they don't do it in the stores, they do it through the parking lot. And that's always one of the big problems we have. Of course, you always have to be concerned if you have a Christmas tree that's displayed through your window, hold off on putting the presents there until maybe Christmas Eve night. But those are just a couple of safety tips we'd like to remind everybody. Excuse me. Our Street Crimes Unit recently, who have received some complaints through different citizens, have made, were able to execute a couple of search warrants. And two of them were pretty, pretty decent amounts. We, one of them, a female was arrested with like eight grams of marijuana, but had approximately 250 illegal Valium pills, and also some hash, which is something you don't see too much of. The other one we had was just last Friday, and over on Gan Road, and it turned out to be a grow house. So we-
What house?
A grow house. They were growing marijuana. And it was a very sophisticated program, too. It was not, you know, just somebody growing stuff for, for themselves. So we, you know, we contacted MCS, and of course, they, they took over the case from One other thing, we, we wanted to thank the mayor and council, because y'all approved some additional funds, and we recently took possession of a new ballistic shield, one that stops rifle bullets. And we're, we are the only jurisdiction in Cobb County that has one. But with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Are you finding any issues with companies leaving packages at doors, at front doors? Because I'm missing some shoes that were shipped to me.
Are these?
No.
Okay.
Those are Buster Brown, they're not Buster Brown.
Buster Brown.
No, I'm serious.
I have not heard of anything in our jurisdiction where that's happened. That's, that's always a concern. I know last year, not here in Smyrna, but within Cobb County, we'd had some reports where people were following around FedEx vehicles and UPS. But, you know, I've not seen any complaints on that yet. But that's always, that's another thing, you know, have it shipped to your company. I know that's what I do. Unless I need a pair of shoes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I think it says running shoes for next year. Chief Akry?
My running days are over.
You don't have one.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you're all doing well. I understand that a few of you aren't here because you're sick, and I think there's at least one of you here that, that is not feeling well. I feel your pain is going around. I just got over it a couple of weeks ago myself, and most of my kids have the same thing, so it just kind of goes along with the season. I've got a few safety tips as well. I'd like to remind everybody, for those, those of you that, that enjoy the fresh cut, live Christmas trees, please be sure to be diligent, and make sure that the water basin doesn't dry out, so the tree doesn't dry out. Also, when you put your lights on your trees, be sure to inspect the strand, make sure that there's no frayed wires or exposed wires within that. I'd like to thank the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation. Last Friday was the 14th Annual Shop With a Hero. Through their donations, they were able to allow Smyrna Public Safety, both police and fire, to take 60 local elementary school-aged children shopping for Christmas. So that's always a lot of fun, and it was very, very successful. This year, we kind of stepped it up a little bit. We've always done 50 children for the last eight to 10 years, and we raised that number to 60 this year. So thank you so much to them and all of the work they do to raise those funds. The Fire Department's busy, all different divisions, suppression division, our call volume is up approximately 7% over last year. Our training division is within the last few weeks of the second probationary rookie school for 2014. We should be back up to full staff by the end of January, so we're almost there, and we're excited about that. Our Bureau of Fire Prevention is busy, thank goodness, because they're busy with requests for plans review, and site inspections, and building inspections, and that kind of stuff. I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I know space heaters this time of year are a challenge, too, so just if you in the viewing public are concerned about that, you have a concern about whether your unit is safe, I'm sure the Fire Department will be happy to help, help you with that. And I hope you do, as I do, not just during this holiday season, but year round. If you see a member of the public safety community out there on the job, or even if they're having lunch, just stop by and thank them. They stand in the way and protect us and our property and our, our businesses. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I wish, I wish everyone a pleasant and safe holiday season.
Mr. White, let him come.
Thank you, Your Honor. HR Director Kay Bullock has no report tonight, but our city clerk, Terry Graham, has a brief
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to report on Court Services. In November 2014, there were six, we had 686 citations received and processed for court dates. The docket count in November were 487, and ended up on six dockets. Bond forfeitures, there were 233 cases that paid prior to their court date and bond forfeited. Failures to appear, there were 97 individuals that failed to appear for their court date. An audit of failure to appear was done, which included warrants and license suspensions were completed and all cleared. FTAs and warrants were removed, removed and updated. Other news, in November of 2014, Court Services installed the new government Windows software. This upgrade allows customers to pay online at www.smyrnapay.com, and they now pay over the phone with a new IVR phone service. They also call Court Services and find out their court date and find the amount through the automated service. In the city clerk's office, in our open records, during the month of November, we processed and completed 20 open records requests. Court Services processed 26 open records requests, and the Police Department 52 open records requests. We prepared two mayor and council agendas, two committee of the whole agendas, and two pre-council meeting agendas. Minutes, we've drafted two sets of mayor and council meeting minutes, which are approximately 12 to 15 pages in length. Pre-council meeting minutes, two sets of minutes, three to five pages in length. Planning and zoning, the clerk's office is working with Community Development to run Legistar, our agenda management and voting software. The PZ, P&amp;Z meeting takes place once a month. We're in the process of streamlining, streaming these meetings on our website. We provide action minutes and process the minutes through Legistar. License and variance board meetings, the clerk's office runs Legistar for these meetings twice a month and provides the minutes. Meetings postings, our office tracks all meetings, making sure that they are posted according to the Open Meetings Act, and we track the meeting minutes provided. Contracts, all contracts come through the clerk's office and to be routed and signature scanned and filed. Our new news is that we are streamlining our open records with new software, and will, that will help us manage open records. Our office must touch a request many times each day before it is completed. All records requests involve many different departments within the city, and the software will help us with the efficiency and remaining timely with our requests while keeping them organized. And that's all I have to say.
Somebody's been busy.
Any questions? The clerk's office is very busy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. It's always a busy time of year, the weeks from the beginning of December up until the holidays begin. It seems like every year, folks try to take a month's worth of business and work and activity and fit it all into just two or three weeks. And so it's been a busy time, and I'm sure for everybody else, that's, that's equally I appreciate the Old Vinings Mill HOA inviting me to their annual HOA meeting last Wednesday. Got to see those folks and talk to them, enjoyed that, that time in front of them. We just approved it tonight on the consent agenda, but this Thursday, the 18th, I'll be hosting the Oak Ridge Estates Homeowner Association for their annual meeting. Look forward to seeing those people, and again, renewing friendships and making new ones. I also want to thank the Campbell Middle School Foundation. This is a private group that's, you know, organized and devotes themselves to helping Campbell Middle School in all kinds of ways, you know, on campus, financially, support for the faculty and staff, and for the kids. This past Saturday, they had their Jingle Bowl Flag Football Tournament, and Atkins Park was a sponsor, they provided food onsite, they sold a lot of concessions, raised a lot of money for the foundation, a lot of volunteer hours put in. It was a very nice event. The kids had a great time, and that's always the most important part. And, you know, I appreciate Joan Stewart and the Campbell Middle School Foundation devoting themselves to improving our schools, and that's what we need to have from, you know, as many citizens as possible for all of our schools. Citizen involvement, community involvement, make our schools better, make our schools stronger. For all those people involved in doing that, I extend my sincere thanks. Also had a very nice turnout on Saturday, December 6th, for the Veterans Rally. I called down at Emory Adventist Hospital. We had about 100 people show up. It was a great turnout, a lot of support, and we're trying simply to call the VA's attention to the fact that the hospital is closed, and that site is available for a new veterans clinic that Congress has approved and hopes to build within X number of years. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but we hope, you know, I know the veterans would like to see that site come to Smyrna. So thanks for everybody for turning out, and we may do that again, you know, in the next month or two. Finally, I'd just like to note that for my friends of the Jewish faith, Hanukkah starts tomorrow. We wish you a happy Hanukkah season. For those of you of the Christian faith, Merry Christmas. Stay safe. Happy holidays to everyone. Enjoy the time with your family. Give thanks, and best wishes for the New Year. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mary Moore from the Smyrna Library to give us a report.
Hi, good evening, thanks. There are two wonderful art exhibits upstairs in the library's upper level gallery right now. In the display cases, there are original hand-blown glass art pieces by Tom Lilly of Lilly Glass Blowers. They're really quite extraordinary. And the gallery walls have compositions of various different medium, media by students of the upper and middle schools of Whitefield Academy. So once you let out for school, bring the kids into the library to load them up on books on the first floor, but be sure to go upstairs to the second floor and show them all the beautiful artwork before you leave. In January, for the first Sunday lecture, Dr. William Marchionne will talk about the history of the Western and Atlantic Railroad, which is now known as the Smyrna CSX Line. The state line, which it was known then, was the largest public works project undertaken in the state of Georgia in the 19th century. So Dr. Marchionne will be talking about that on Sunday, January 4th, at 3:00 p.m. in the library meeting room. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'd like to call Travis Landrum from the Parks and Recreation Department to give us a report. And while he's coming up, I also want to thank the folks with Parks and Rec and Public Works that put up all the beautiful lights in the downtown. It really looks nice, so thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On behalf of Steve Ciaccio and the Parks and Recreation Department, have a brief report tonight. Holiday season, in order to keep on giving the gift of giving, and for the holidays, the Red Cross will be having their final blood drive Monday, December 22nd, at the Smyrna Community Center, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. So that is an opportunity to come out and give blood right before lay down on Christmas Eve and get ready to celebrate with our families. In our usual business this time of year, we're having our annual closing for repair and maintenance. Noon, December 24th until January 2nd, we'll be closed for repair and maintenance. We'll have things such as the ceiling tiles replaced, the breaks and tiles within the facility, they'll be acid washed and steamed, pressured and cleaned, and then we'll also have the hardwood and the gymnasiums, they'll be stripped and refinished. So during that time period, the facility will be closed. The department will still continue to operate at our Bronner Hall and Wolf Center facilities, but the community center will resume normal business on January 2nd. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Travis. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corkey Welch.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I call anyone up, I'd like to remind everyone that lives in the Lake Drive/Lake Court area, that I will host a community meeting regarding the lighting of the dog park on Lake Drive this coming Thursday evening at 7:00 at the New Recycle Center. This is a proposal that's come, come to me from the citizens that go to the dog park out there, and what they're looking to do is put some lighting out there so that it can be used after dark, especially this, this season. And what we're looking to do is put some lighting out there that'll automatically shut off at a given hour, around 8:00, I believe. So anybody interested, please come out, and that's 7:00 at the New Recycle Center. So please come out. With that, I'll call Ms. Ann Kirk.
Thank you very much, and if anybody doesn't know that address, it's 3475 Lake Drive, and we're, we're anticipating an opening there in the next couple of months, so we're really excited. I have a little security tip. If you're lucky enough to get a nice, big flatscreen TV or other expensive electronics, please don't leave the boxes from those items on the curb to be picked up. That's just a flag to thieves that you have something in there that they might like. Please bring them to the recycling center, and it will be open on December 27th for business as usual, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this is the Smyrna Hill Drive location. So that's just something I remember from last year. And you can also bring us your old electronics, the ones that you are trading in for the new ones. We take those at no charge, except for televisions. We do have to charge a $10 fee for those. But we'll take any kind of television. A lot of places are very restricted on what they will take, so just keep those two facts in mind. It's time to renew community garden memberships. If you'd like to have a plot at the community garden, get in touch with our office, and we will give you a lease form to sign and let you know how, how to do that. We do have plots available. Bring your holiday tree on January the 3rd to Home Depot in Vinings to recycle it. We will be collecting trees from 9:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. We have volunteers on hand to help unload the trees. Please just remember to take all the lights and ornaments off the trees first. No wreaths and garland, because we're unable to process those through the chipper, they contain too much metal. We will have free seedlings and free seed packets for anyone that would like some that brings a tree. And finally, I would like to concur about Councilwoman Wilkinson's ideas about the lights. The lights in the Market Village are absolutely beautiful. If you haven't seen them, please come by and make that a part of your holiday tradition. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll call on Mr. Scott Stokes from Public Works to give a brief report. Nice tie.
Picture of the-
Grinch.
One thing to mention, Assistant Pilot Works Director Frank Martin's mother passed away on Saturday, in case you haven't heard. Funeral's tomorrow in South Carolina. The, quickly, the- The Concord Road game of the 20th of this month to reopen Dunton Street and Kingspring's Road at Concord, they are on schedule, and there shouldn't be any reason they don't have those two intersections back open to Concord. They'll still have that lane shift and that location due to some other work that has to take place after Christmas, but the road, two roadways will be back open by the 20th. A couple of items that currently have purchase orders issued for, so work should begin soon, or parts ordered, is all the scoreboard replacement in our parks, and Smith-Salinas painting at Chuck Camp Park's been awarded. It's bid opening scheduled, our bridge rehabilitation, that bid opening is scheduled for this month. Rose Garden Park, actually, we opened a bid today for the reservicing of the parking lot on the lower end of the park, and then our Reed Street storm sewer replacement is out for bid. And I believe that's about all I have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Scott. With that, turn on our yield.
Ms. Tara Nullwich.
Thank you, sir. I know it's going to devastate the populace to learn that I am losing my voice, so I'm not going to talk a whole lot tonight. I know that Community Relations does not have report tonight. Finance, do you have a report tonight? Who's going to give that? Are you?
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to give an update. We are still working on our MUNIS implementation with utility billing. That is still scheduled to begin next year, hopefully January, February timeframe. That will also coincide with the new lockbox that we will have, so we'll have a local Atlanta address for that lockbox at that point. Continue to work with our SunTrust vendor on getting that established. And also, we're working on our permit and inspection implementation, and wanted to just publicly say thank you to IT. They've been very instrumental in working on both of those implementations and helping us with those data conversion issues.
Is that it?
Thank you very much. That is. Have a happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas, and we will see y'all in January.
I've got a 15-year, on 12/13/1999, Jennifer Bennet came to work for the city. Jennifer, you want to come down here and get this, because I'm not going to bring It seems like, I don't think it's been 15 years, but it was December 13th, 1999. Is that right, 15 years? Congratulations. Anything else? Scott Cock? No, you've already done your thing, haven't you? We've got, we do not have any kind of hearing. We've got one person that has signed up for citizens' input, Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
I gave her copies of an incident that happened at Lake Park. I was over there, and I noticed two people in there with three dogs. One was a Great Dane, and two others. And as I turned my back, I heard screaming, turned around, the Great Dane was on the Golden Retriever, and the lady couldn't pull it off. The other guy did. The dog was on the bottom. And we couldn't stop the bleeding. The Great Dane tore open his arm. I called for police and fire and rescue. They in turn called the ambulance. Really bad situation. I've been over to Lake Park, I've seen a dog in half an hour start three serious fights in there. They shouldn't be in there, and I blame the owners for not knowing their dog well. It's getting more crowded at these parks. Even the people that are over at Lake Park say they don't go over to Burger Park because of the serious fights now, or don't even go to the parks anymore. Or if they see their dog that their dog got in a fight with the previous time, they turn around and leave. That shouldn't happen. Should be able to turn your back and watch the dogs play. And I'm concerned it's a safety issue. That's why the city, with the building of the new houses, more animals, with the building of the houses, habitat, you're going to get more wildlife calls. I see dogs running around all the time. And Cobb County cannot handle Smyrna with any good punctuality, as I call it, and at times, you have to wait two and three hours. This also puts a burden on the Police Department. So when people say, "Call the Police Department," now you're taking time away from their routines or what they have to do on calls. We need an animal control officer. I feel the rules of the parks, there's no one to enforce them. I've seen five- and six-year-old kids in there when the rule is 12-years-old. Not that a 12-year-old can get mauled just as easily as a five- or six-year-old and tell the people, "He's got to be 12 to be in here." But there's no one to enforce it. And I hope you consider in the new year, getting an animal control officer for Smyrna, because at least you can keep a record of the dogs that get in these serious fights like the police report that you're reading. It's going to happen again. And I really, at least if he sees a repetitive problem with an animal, he should have the authority to ban the dog and the owner from the park. Because some of these dogs that get in fights, we do tell them, "Please leave. Maybe we have no right to do it." But I mean, I don't want my dog being mauled like this gentleman was. It was an awful situation, and it's going to happen again. Again, a safety issue. And again, this increase of water, the profit in the Water Department should be, that's four increases, I believe, in two years. Use your profits from the Water Department to absorb this 4%. It helps everybody on fixed incomes. Thank you.
I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I want to thank all of our employees for what they do for our community. Fire and police always come to the forefront, but, you know, we've got a lot of guys out there that are picking up stuff, and guys that are in sewer system, the water system, and we've got great employees. That's what makes our city so good. So we say everyone a Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and we're adjourned